I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats.
You should be sending an agenda, Mr.
I see it, yes. Couple of announcements, we held executive session to discuss contracts with DLST, DASS, and MC, as well as superintendent evaluation. I don't have any other announcements, can I have a motion to adopt an agenda? Mr. Gilbert first, Mrs. Rajat second. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Any no's? We don't have any no's, motion carries. So, this is a study session which is designed for the purpose of having administrative updates to the board. There are no public comments on these. Residents may attend the next scheduled meeting on July 7th, enter contact the board via email at bo@shenschools.org with any comments or questions. All questions come to the office of the Public Information Officer and are shared with the board and our superintendent as appropriate. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the board president. Operational questions, concerns are typically addressed by the superintendent and her designated. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Robinson for his comments. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Preston. So I just wanted to share a few things that are of interest to the board. If you get a chance to drive through the campus, if you notice last week, we started the signage project with a smaller, what we call pedestrian signs. This week, we put in a larger building signs on buildings so people could see the buildings from a distance. So if you get a chance to drive through the campus, you can see that. Also, a lot of construction is taking place. Our summer construction schedule, particularly in high school, with the technology wing, science rooms, that's underway right now. So a lot of construction starting to take place. Graduation, again, kudos and thank you very much to the board members for being there the entire day. For those who were able to attend, I appreciate it very much. And for those who are not able to attend, I appreciate your support from a distance because I know you were very supportive of various initiatives. And kudos to the high school administration, faculty, staff, and everyone who made that a wonderful reality for our students. As you know, in our show in a second, the budget vote was passed by a significant margin, as well as board candidates. And so we're pleased and grateful to the community for its constant and consistent support. And it's kind of hard when you think about it over the years that we've had a very consistent support by the community for our budget. So thank you very much for that. And I want to say a special kudos to Anita Adamcheck. Anita is a person who organized our absentee ballot process, particularly the counting of the absentee ballot. And I want to just point it out because I think people don't have an appreciation of the steps that here at Shen that we took, probably quite frankly, which are different from many other school districts. Because we took a kind of three-tier authentication process to ensure that at different stages of the ballot, no one was able to see who voted on what, which is ultimately what we want absentee ballot to be. So you can never connect what voters' votes are. And so that took some time, but we wanted to take the time to do it right. And we certainly did, and the results showed as well. So certainly to Anita and Kat for what they have done on that piece of it. Just recently, the business review came out with their rankings. And I'm pleased again, Shen is ranked in the top five of the 92 school districts across the 11 counties in our region. And so just kudos to a lot of folks who do a lot of great things for our students. And so we're pleased with that. And ironically, we are the lowest, actually, I'm sorry, the second to the lowest per pupil cost out of those 92 districts. We are actually number 89, and two other districts didn't report. So there's only one district that was lower than us, that's Hudson Falls. And I share that point with the board because when we think about as a system, not only are we trying to do well, but we're trying to also be very efficient. And so when you think about that marker, you're top five in performance as a school district, number four, and yet you're number 89, the lowest per pupil, one of the lowest per pupil costs in the region. So when you put those two things together, there's a lot of good things happening. So I say thank you very much for the board for supporting our leadership over the years, to make those things a reality year after year as we move forward. So again, that was just a recent business review ranking that I think is worthwhile pointing out to the board as well. Reopening is a big conversation we have right now, not only here in Shen, but I'm a part, as well as Mr. Millie, part of the state reopening committees. I was on a call yesterday for five hours as a part of that piece of it. So we're trying to influence as much as we can. Some of the decisions is happening at the state level. I'm also on a national committee trying to influence some of those things as well. Hopefully that we have the type of flexibility that we want and need to be able to open schools in September in a way that's, again, consistent with the quality education that we have provided to our students over the years. So those are some of the big rocks right now as we go into the summer months. It's really focused on how our goals will shift as a result of what we need to do for reopening, as well as how our goals will shift as a result of what our final models would look like in terms of what schools will look like in September or in the fall. So those are the big things that we're really focused on as we look to wrap up this year and start the next year as well. Do you want me to continue with the two presentations, Mr. Preston?
Yes, please do.
So let me just, sorry, let me just do this again. Okay, I have a lot of technical difficulty here. There we are. So in a minute, you'll see, and again, just to kind of recap briefly on some of the data points for... One second, this is coming up. Can you see this presentation, Mr. Preston?
Yes, Oliver, I can see it.
Okay, so again, I just wanted just a quick little recap, since the board has asked tonight to certify the votes. We are very pleased with the differential. If you see here, it's a breakdown of the buses and the budget itself, 72% almost respectfully for both in terms of the margins and the support. So tremendous support by our community. And if you see, this is a breakdown of the board members. Mrs. Hoffman with 3,460, Mrs. Miller with 2,0646, Mrs. Gleason at 1654, and you can see the tally as we move forward. So again, I just wanted to recap that piece of it to show that the margins were pretty strong margins, and which is important, recognizing that this election, being an absentee ballot only election, was a challenge for us as a school system. Quite frankly, it was a challenge for school districts across the state. And there's a lot of lessons learned, and we hope that if the state see this as something they want to do again, that they'll be consulted with school districts to figure out how can we more effectively and efficiently do this? And quite frankly, more cost effectively do this. This vote process was probably 10, 12 times more than our typical vote in any given year. And so we certainly don't want this to be the norm because it was such a cost to put on this particular vote with absentee ballots only, based upon the parameters that we were dealt with at that time versus the parameters ironically that are happening right now today as we have a primary election, which was done absolutely different from the school vote process. And I think that confused the public in many ways because people aren't accustomed to an absentee ballot voting process. So I think that novelty made it a challenge for many of our voters as well. So I'll pause if there are any questions from board members or otherwise. Otherwise, I'll shift to the next presentation for the board.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead, please, shift over.
At this point, as I get ready to transition, I'm going to ask Mrs. Hedwark, Katie Hedwell, who's our Director of Food Services. One of the things that Katie is going to talk briefly through this presentation, but before Katie comes aboard, again, there's so many things that happen in the school district that people don't realize behind the scenes. And I'm just going to share a little personal story. Katie invited me one morning to stop by to see her crew as they made sandwiches for our students and delivered at three different sites, which I'm sure she'll talk about. And just to see the enthusiasm of these ladies pull up at, you know, 6:30 in the morning to come to, to put together and wrap up hundreds of sandwiches for our students. And, you know, and I was actually moved by their enthusiasm. To them, it wasn't about work, it was about, you know, being a community servant, servant, so to speak. And so I was so pleased with that. And later on that day, I went to one of the sites and it happened to be raining, where they were delivering the sandwiches, the packages to families from one of the small school buses. And a parent drove up and one of Katie's staffers said, they got to the point now, they know the families, they know how many lunches or packages that should be delivered into each family. And the lady who drove up, she got up, she saw me, recognized who I was. She got out of her car in the rain to tell me that you don't realize the difference this has made for our family. And I share that with you because, you know, oftentimes we hear about these things, we don't think about the implication that it has on families. And we talk about, we shouldn't have anyone worrying about having food insecurities. And sometimes it's hard for us to wrap our heads around when you don't have food insecurities. And I share that because what has happened with Katie and her staff is so vital to so many members of our community, what they did, what they're doing right now, and what they're doing in the summer. So I just want to provide that context to the board that it's not about the numbers because, you know, if it's one kid, one family being served, that's one kid, one family that's deserving of our effort and our time. And so again, I want to publicly, in front of the board, thank Katie, and hopefully she expressed these sentiments to her staff because it's truly made a difference. And that one lady and her family is just an example of that difference. So thank you very much, Katie, for what you do. And you can walk through the presentation, just let me know when you want me to transition slides.
Okay, thank you so much for that, I really appreciate it, and I know my staff does too. So on the first slide, as you can see, from March 16th, we started this until today. Our numbers, we've served 20,802 meals to students in our district, which is huge. I think this included breakfast and lunch at three different sites throughout the area. And then I just wanted to include some pictures of my very, very hardworking staff during this time. They, you know, came in with smiles and like Dr. Robinson said, they just, you know, did what they had to do because they know how important this is to the students, especially to the families. And even then, we received a lot of thank you notes, personal pictures from a lot of little kiddos, which were great. Thank you notes, cookies, cupcakes, I mean, anything you could imagine, it was so sweet. So it was great. And then on the next slide, just summertime, our plan, we're going to be entering our third summer working with Captain Youth and Family Services for the summer feeding program. We're going to deliver to 18 sites throughout Saratoga County that we'll prepare lunch for from June 29th to August 28th, Monday through Friday. And then with the help of the Shen Bountiful Backpack Program, all kids are going to receive food for the weekends throughout the summer too. So we're excited, so we're rolling right into that, so.
So moving along to the backpack distribution. During COVID-19, one of the biggest things, you'll see there's some statistics here of some of the food, the numbers of families we have served. One of the biggest things that really stands out with the backpack distribution was that over 55,000 pounds of food was received from the regional food bank. And we have an estimated similar amount of 55,000 pounds of food that was donated since we started this on March 19th. Every Wednesday, families, our staff, volunteers, as well as our staff here from Shenandoah delivered meals to families, serving approximately 260 students, but enough food to serve the family or to provide for the family for four to five days. So some statistics there that you see, and if you want to go to the next slide. We have, we could not do this program without the community partners that we had. And as I said, not a beat was missed. On March 19th was our first delivery, and I would be remiss if I did not mention Beth Miles was the backbone to this program. She really worked hard, and we were in contact probably three to five times a day just trying to make sure that we didn't miss a beat. But our community partners here, and this is just to name a few, who really supported us and who have continued to support us through this whole time. And actually, our last delivery is tomorrow. And as Katie said, we're going to be assisting with the summer meals program as needed on the weekends. So I just, again, want to thank everyone from our transportation department to food service to the Board of Education, Dr. Robinson, for just really their continuous support with this program. We couldn't have done this or continue to do this without everyone's help.
So again, thank you, Mrs. Carmen, thank you, Mrs. Hedwell, for that program. And once we get the dates and location, I'm actually going to share with the board members because, you know, it's one of those things that I think that is sometimes worthwhile seeing. We do a lot of things that people hear about, sometimes just going to see it for yourself to have a real appreciation of how these things actually play out. So I'm certainly would do that as we get closer to it. So the third piece on that, Mr. Preston, was Mrs. Stevenson representing the foundation. Typically, this time of year, we'll have the foundation just provide an update in terms of some of the things that's happening with the foundation, how they're moving forward. So Mrs. Stevenson said she would provide an overview of that as well.
Yeah, sure, no problem. So as we went forward with the Shenandoah Education Foundation this year, currently, we have 13 members that sit on this board. Myself and Gusta right now are the liaisons, and I'm, believe it or not, Chair of the Foundation. And I still work very closely with Bill Casey, so we have a very good relationship getting through that. We are looking at two possible new members, and we'll be changing treasurers in the coming meetings. So that's awesome, and I always like to see new people from the community. It's usually somebody that's been affiliated with Shenandoah, has graduated from Shenandoah that wants to give back, so that's always a positive sign. As you know, our one big fundraiser for the year due to the health crisis with COVID was the Green and White Gala that was slated to go, I believe, April 12th at the Hilton Garden Inn. We are hopeful that we will still be able to have the gala on November 14th. We are hoping in the same venue, the Hilton Garden, we will see what that looks like at that point. We're holding everything, and we're still holding the date. So I doubt very much we'll be able to get a lot of fundraising done for it, but you know what, it's a time to celebrate, and it is a year to celebrate, and that's what we need to do. So hopefully, that will go off without a hitch. Some of the major grants that came out of the foundation this year, we were able to support the Varsity Girls Lacrosse Team and their winter coats, their winter jackets, their varsity jackets. So we passed that unanimously, that was great. The Bountiful Backpack, we were just talking about it. The foundation, over a couple of years, we made one payment recently, and the payment of $10,000 was donated from the foundation back to the backpack program. It's an awesome give back, and we're always striving and trying to give back to that program individually, as much as the foundation does from the money received. The other thing that we've done in collaboration, I want to thank Dr. Wood for this. We were going to send two art teachers onto continuing education, but when the COVID crisis happened, we had to pull back on that. Obviously, they did not go. But that's just a picture into the collaboration that happens between the foundation and the district. So we're certainly happy about that. And as we got toward the end of the year, we looked around in the other districts. We saw that the seniors were receiving, they were getting signs in their yards. So in conjunction with Move and Ads, Rob Potter, because Mary, you know, Mary also sits on the board, Move and Ads ordered the signs, and the foundation was able to support that endeavor for our seniors. Very important that we've done that. And I think the seniors appreciate it and their families. And we will continue to look at post-pandemic needs of Shenandoah. And wherever we feel we can fit positively, we will certainly continue to give back. And like I said, fundraising of any sort is going to be very difficult in these economic times, probably for a year, year and a half out. So I hope we will continue to bring you good news. And I'm very proud to sit on this foundation, it's really been, it's really been fun. So really, that's my wrap up, and I hope that, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer, but that's a high level.
Do you have any questions? Okay. So at this point, we're done with the presentations, and let's move on to action items. The first one is certification of vote. Can I have a motion to bring this one up? Mrs. Rajat first, Mrs. Hoffman second. Any comments, questions from other board members? I may have some comments, but go ahead, other board members.
I just want to congratulate Deanna, I just want to congratulate Naomi and Gusta. I know that was very stressful and long, it's not normally that long, but congratulations on an awesome win.
Yeah, so, you know, I second that, Deanna. And the other thing is, when you look at these results, the overwhelming majority of yeses to noes, the overwhelming support for Gus and Naomi, really tell a lot about the support we have in this community. And they are happy with the way we, as a district, are running the district. Not only through us, but from Oliver and everybody down. It's a great confirmation, so thank you.
I'd like to say that I'm grateful, I'm humbled by the support through this journey, by the support from the board, the support from the community. This has strengthened that bond, it's also strengthened my resolve. The pandemic has changed us in many ways, and I like to focus on the positive things that it has done as far as appreciation for one another, nurturing, continuing to build meaningful and lasting relationships. That has made the burden much lighter. It felt like a campaign that was never going to end, and at times it felt there was no relief in sight. But the support has energized me, and I choose to keep that positive energy moving forward and look forward to continuing to serve on this board. Congratulations, Gusta, and I look forward to continuing to serve with you. And hopefully, we can get that champagne, we can toast to that at some point.
But I would also... Sorry to interrupt. Yeah, I would also like to thank the community, thank my board colleagues, everybody who came out to vote, very much appreciated, very grateful. And I look forward to continuing to serve, and yes, champagne.
And I'd like to also congratulate Gusta and Naomi as well. Thank the community though, because I know not only was it frustrating for us as, you know, as a district with the absentee ballot and all the confusion behind it, but all the hours that went into the dedication of the district staff and also the, I'm sorry, also those that certified the votes and everything. It's really, they're the unsung heroes behind the scenes, so thank you for all the patience. Again, to the staff and also the community for understanding, although it wasn't perfect, still showing the support at a large margin that we did receive on the votes is outstanding. Also showing the importance of having continuity, you know, during this very uncertain times, you know, with voting in the current board members, Naomi and Gusta, the incumbents. So we appreciate that as well, knowing that this is the time that that is very key to have that continuity moving forward and keeping things going and navigating. So thank you all.
Bob, I just wanted to say that I actually really greatly appreciated the fact that we had so many candidates come forward. I think it was the largest number we've ever had come forward. And I felt that each and every one of them was a legitimate, qualified individual. But I have to say that I think that the two that emerged are the best people we can have at this particular point in time, so I congratulate them. And I look forward to continuing to serve with them for however long I serve.
Any other comments? I would like to congratulate Naomi and Gusta for coming back for more. There are quite a few challenges that we face in the upcoming years, but I think we're in very good shape with both of them being in the chairs that they will occupy. I think this election should be looked at in historical context. All of the 700 school districts in the state of New York rose to the challenge. Shenandoah Central School District, I think, did a phenomenal job to ensure that this was a properly run election. Things like having a live stream, things like the very thorough process to review the ballots to ensure anonymity for every voter. A lot of things were done here that I think will set the standard if we were to go deeper and to continue mail-in ballot elections. And I think that may be the trend the state of New York and the country may adopt because of what was happening the last two weeks. So please consider this a historical accomplishment that you can probably look back on and realize that this might be a moment in history where elections changed in America and going to mail in ballots. That being said, we did encounter some complaints. Some folks are still emailing us, and we do want to make sure that those complaints are addressed with future improvements. You can always get better at anything you do, and we all have to realize that. But at the same time, the message that has come forward and the comments from other board members indicate that we accomplished what was intended, a very fair election, very appropriate anonymity for voters, and I think this is a very positive for the community in the state of New York. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any nays? No nays, motion carries.
Aye.
Okay. I heard a comment?
Sorry, it took me a while to unclick my mic, sorry.
Okay. Next up, bus bond resolution. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman first, Mrs. Rajat second, any comments, questions? All right, all in favor for the bus bond resolution, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, okay, thank you. Motion carries. Let's go on to personnel, approval of superintendent's contract extension and compensation. Can I have a motion on this one? Mr. Gilbert, Mrs. Rajat, second. At this point, comments? Mrs. Stevenson, do you have a comment? Okay, any other comments on the superintendent's contract extension and compensation?
I have a comment. So we've talked about this, and so first, I need to say that I do support this contract for Dr. Robinson. But I also believe it's very important that we remain true to our convictions, even if that means standing alone, and I'll explain what I mean by that. So my decision on how I vote tonight on Dr. Robinson's contract extension to the year 2025 and his raise is not something I take lightly. I spent a lot of time thinking about these things, but I need to explain a little bit further. So first, Dr. Robinson, I'd like to say this is, that, as you know, I reached out to you before tonight because I wanted to make it clear, I wanted to share my thoughts. I thought that was very important to do that. I think it's very important not to surprise our superintendent. And I wanted you to understand my concern specific because I want you to know that I believe in you, and I really do. And so I hope I can make that point. So what I, so I'm sharing this is really more for everyone else. I made a request to separate the resolutions, one regarding the extension of the superintendent's contract, another for the pay raise. The response was to keep them as one resolution. That did upset me because I felt like it forced me to go one direction or the other. And, but be that as it may, I hold Dr. Robinson in high regard, and I really do sincerely mean that. I appreciate you sharing how our school district has recently ranked in the capital region and the cost per pupil. And I do appreciate that, that is something very important, especially now. We're living in a time when we can no longer sit idly and not recognize our past, or rather, our part in allowing social injustice to fester and grow. And so I support and I stand with Dr. Robinson, our superintendent, as we move forward to achieving equity among our students so that they are not only better prepared for the future, but also are better human beings. I believe his passion and focus is for our children's education. You probably want to know Ben, why am I making this statement? And the reason why I'm, why, the reason why I'm doing this is because I don't specifically support the raise, but not for the reason that you may think. I do support giving our superintendent a raise. But I feel that this time, at this time, it is not judicious. It's, at this time, we need to be making the difficult financial decisions and sacrifices need to be made. And that's why I'm not recommending, I'm not making this statement for the other raises that are being requested tonight, but I'm starting at the top. I, I feel that we need to set an example. In the short term and long term, we need to monitor the effects of this economic downturn by firmly keeping our eyes on our chief goal, and that is preserving high quality educational programs. My reason for voting has less to do with any particular raise amount because this is not a lot of money. It's more to do with the decision to push for an increase in a time of uncertainty. And one point of certainty that we do have at this point is that we know that we had to adjust our state aid to last year's amounts. I believe decisions need to be in preserving programs as we head into the storm. And our immediate goal right now is to reopen our schools. We will take what we've learned during New York pause to improve the experience for remote learning and to begin onsite classes for summer school and for the fall. But we do not yet know the financial effects from the pandemic or the economic downturn. In addition, we must gear up for a totally new educational environment that will launch us in just a few weeks when summer school starts. Dr. Robinson, you have my full support and confidence and I hope you really believe, I hope, I hope you believe me because I do believe in you. And although I'm firmly, I, well, I shouldn't say, I'm not supportive of a pay increase at this time. I believe supporting your contract is the more important action. And so I'm voting yes, because I want you to know and understand that we need you here right now. Now is the time to make the difficult decisions and I'm grateful and I genuinely mean this, I hope you believe me, to be sitting here for another term at this table and working with this board and your team.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. Does anybody else want to make any comments?
Yes, I would love to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Villalobos.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's anybody sitting at this table that is not fully aware of all of the various forces that are operating on the district, financial, social and structural, that are very difficult to handle and to handle successfully. Our future to a very great extent depends on the success of Dr. Robinson in doing his job and the people who work with him doing their job well. If the last three months are any indication or any evidence of whether they are capable of doing that, then there's a wholehearted, absolutely without any doubt whatsoever, they are. And while it may be that some people view giving a raise to anybody at this point in time as insensitive, I'm sorry about that. But this is an absolutely justified and earned increase. They put in more hours, dealt with more difficult problems than anybody in the reasonable history of this district. I, I know there's hyperbole, the people that all have never before, that sort of thing. But quite frankly, it is true. We are in a very unique time. And we need to have people know that we give them their confidence. We have them, have confidence in them. And it can't be just a, an empty word service type of thing. It should be a, an absolutely concrete example of it. And I believe by going forward with these relatively modest increases to the people who are absolutely critical to the future of this district is well within keeping of the responsibility of the board and I hope the community will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other board members wanting to make comments? Please raise your hand so I can see you.
I would like to, Bob.
Go ahead, Mrs. Miller.
I just would like to piggyback on what Gary has just said, which is, I also support the contract. I believe that Dr. Robinson and his team and the administrators have been working around the clock to provide our kids, our district with the best of the best at a time that is so, so uncertain. And I think it's the least we can do right now to show our appreciation for all the hard work and effort that they have put in, that he has put in. And I, job well done in a very tough time and I support this.
Mrs. Rajat, please. Go ahead.
Yes. Naomi, first of all, I want to thank you, you know, for speaking out because I know it's difficult when you're the odd man out or odd woman out, for lack of a better term, in, in this decision. So I do applaud you for being able to speak up, taking your role as a board member, as elected board member seriously. And to that point, I too, as well as our colleagues here, take our job seriously in representing our community. One of the things I am in support of the contract and the raise, as many of the fellow board members have mentioned thus far, both Gary and Gusta, at this time even more so with pivoting this district and doing it well. At a time of crisis, strong leadership is so key and essential, especially with all the unexpected moving forward. To show our support to Dr. Robinson, not only again in a contract, but in compensation is, is I think it would be a detriment to us if we did not support that. The other thing too is we, if we, any one of us felt that this small percentage that we're looking at would be detrimental to our fiscal, sound fiscal budget and operations that would take away from any of the programs and our students who are our number one mission here, none of us would vote for that if we felt that would be the case. So I feel we are being thoroughly responsible as board members to, to vote on this the way that many of us have. And again, a vote of confidence to Dr. Robinson in leading us forward through this time. And again, making sure the community knows we are sensitive to what the community feels, but we're also sensitive to those that work with us by our side in this district every day and starting with the top with Oliver. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Gilbert, go ahead, please.
So I'm not going to reiterate everything the rest of the board said because I agree with, with Christina and Gusta and Gary. He absolutely deserves, 3% is a, a paltry number in my mind, but it's a financially responsible number. And it is very symbolic because we do support him. To give him nothing, in my opinion, frankly, is a slap in the face. It's disrespectful and it's unearned. He has worked his butt off for this district 24/7. He takes a lot of flack, if you will, to use a polite term, for a lot of things and that's his job. And he does get paid to do that. But he also needs to be recognized for the good job that he does and the support that he has. As I said earlier, we had a great vote from our community. Thank you to the community for that great vote. We had great support for our existing board. And I do believe that overall the community does believe what we're doing. And in order to have a ship sail, you got to have a captain. Oliver has been an outstanding captain and deserves the, even the minimal respect of the raise. So I would not settle for anything less. Thank you.
Deanna, do you want to make a comment?
I do. Thank you. I do agree with Todd, Christina, Gusta and Gary. Nobody sees, and in my leadership role, nobody sees the aggravation sometimes that this man goes through. Nobody sees even the hate mail that he gets. And like Todd said, yeah, part of the job and he does get paid for it. He gets hate mail over race, for God's sakes. On the heels of an incredible ceremony for our 2020 class, amidst of a historic vote that took hours and just he got pummeled. I mean, the whole administrative staff got pummeled. The years that I've known him since 2008. I said to my colleagues tonight, I never, I never felt more disappointed in, in the, in a, in a way down a road that I thought we might go. So I choose not to go down that road. I told, I, I, I support Dr. Robinson. I support what he does. I support the programming that the team and Dr. Robinson continue to offer our students, all 10,000 of them. And I can, I, I, my hats are, my hat is off to him. I call him the chief finance. You know, I know Kathy does a great job, but he is, to me, I mean, between him and Kathy, they are top notch financially. Nobody's got it over them. They continually bring our community static. I mean, where no increases, slight increases under the budget, under the budget cap, under the tax cap is unbelievable. And I know they, our team, Dr. Robinson, will bring us through the next, the next wave and crest that we might feel in the coming months. So hats off, Dr. Robinson. You deserve everything and more.
Okay, I'll have some concluding comments. I would like to reaffirm what the previous five speakers have brought forward. One thing I've seen with Dr. Robinson, when I look at other districts, is we have never fallen on our sword by cutting programs and people. That was something he mentioned upfront in the budget discussions. We've seen other districts that have had to cut programs and that means you've wasted all the money you put in in previous years. That's a hidden cost, but there's the deeper hidden cost that the organization sees people being let go. We haven't gone through that since I've been on the board because he's been very careful in knowing where our money is going this year, next year, and understanding those changes so that we don't have to do things that are hurting our future. He will, I'm sure he will continue to do that. If you look at the dollars lost and lives destroyed, lives disrupted by what other districts do and how he has not allowed us to get into that mess, not allowed us to get driven by false expectations that money will be around the corner the next year, he more than has made up for it with whatever raise he's getting over the years. To me, that is an unquantifiable benefit of his presence and we need to factor that in. I have discussions with members of the community. And when I point that out, they come away and they go, you know, I kind of, I agree with you. I challenge any member of the community to talk to me if they want to talk about this further. My feeling on the comment that you presented, Naomi, is you're very proud of what we do and what we've accomplished, but you're taking a principled position around something that is almost theoretical in nature. And, and that's how I feel I need to characterize it. And I think that's how I'm going to move forward here. So with that being the case, are there any other comments, thoughts? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, I see everybody raising their hand. Thank you. Any nays? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to item two, approval of DLST, DAS and management confidential benefits. Can I have a motion to bring this to the table? Mrs. Rajat, second, Mrs. Stevenson. Any comments or questions on this one? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Hands down, any nays? Motion carries. Let's go to staffing recommendations. Will someone be able to present this to us, Dr. Robinson?
Mrs. Bush is here to answer any questions, if there are any questions from the board.
I have one question. Did anything come through since this afternoon to add to this?
No, this should be the most, most recent. Mrs. Ford is also on the call. I think this is the most recent attachment that you, the most, you had the most recent attachment. The board has the most recent attachment.
Yes.
Okay. I hear no other questions. Can I have a motion on this one?
Don't move.
Second, Mrs. Rajat, I think I see your hand. Any questions, any further questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any nays?
Aye.
And let's go to item E, approval of special education settlement.
Again, I could, I could address any question that the board may have as well.
Okay. Can I have a motion to bring this one up? Mr. Gilbert first, Mrs. Miller second. Any comments, questions?
Aye.
Not? All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, we'd like to adjourn. I think in the past, we have answered some chat questions that have come up. Is that a potential thing we can do at this point or?
There's a study session, so we wouldn't have any questions, Mr. Pressley.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Mr. Gilbert first, Mrs. Hoffman second. Any comments? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.